I will. Wolf, here. Coons.
Here.
Plesska.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
And Walcott is on one, correct?
Here.
And student number two.
And our student member Hillary Wilson.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here. Celebration achievements.
Yeah, I invited Mel and Megan to share a little bit about math that we want to celebrate. All right. Mine. You sure can. Yes. Maybe. I'll click for you. And let me slideshow. Yeah, do it and I'll wash your hand. There we go.
All right, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Diane Myers. I teach fifth grade at the intermediate school and but previously the last five years I've taught fourth grade in the district. So I came to share a little bit about what math work we've done at SIS last year and this year, starting this year with perspectives. And as some of you may know, we hit it heavy last year, like really working hard on implementing the tutorials. And a few things that are really important in perspectives that we learned was rather than our students memorizing algorithms and working on like rote skills, we wanted to focus on real world problem solving. And that's exactly what our focus has been. So I wanted to share some, a problem that we came across last week. And as a teacher, you may know that sometimes when your principal walks in, you're like, oh my gosh, we're passing out birthday cake like what's working now. Melissa walked in at the exact right moment, oh, we did go, it was pretty awesome. So these donuts represent, and then it was a problem that my students were able to on their own. So I'm not even like once. So just go back. Sorry.
No, I got it now. I got it now.
You're a no-no.
That's right.
Um, I would absolutely love it if you guys would just take a step back and be a student for me for the next few months. So this problem was created by my students and the goal is instead of choosing just two numbers in a word problem and doing some operation with them, we wanted them to think more about what to do with the problem. So this is exactly created by my students, fifth graders. They were seeing donuts out of the bakery. What questions do you guys have or some things you're wondering about this problem?
What type of donuts?
What type of donuts? Exactly. It's what's on. I think so too. Quick question. Some customers walked into the bakery and bought donuts. Okay, we got a little bit more information, right, like a customer, but we probably still have some more. Can you go to the next one? There were 15 customers in the bakery. Do you have any more questions? Things you're wondering?
Are there enough donuts?
Are there enough donuts? Yeah. Really good question. And they all lied. No, yeah. Let's go to the last one. And this is the big question that we available to end. There were 15 customers in the bakery. They each bought six donuts. All the donuts in the bakery sold at home. So if you could just for a moment, either in your head or on the blueprint console, could you just figure out how you solve this problem the first thing it comes to your mind?
Well, I've kind of seen some of the stuff that so I normally would in my head, you know, start doing the, but I've seen how you break it up. And so it would be six and then groups of 10. And then you get six groups of five and then bring it together.
So when you said I would do it in my head, were you thinking of like the standard algorithm?
Yeah. Which is hard. I mean, I see some of the stuff that comes over my kids and I'm like, I don't do it that way. But yeah.
So you said the standard algorithm, you went back, thought about like your base ten and breaking it up. In my head, I say, okay, 15 times two is 30. So that's easy. So then that's 30, 30, 30.
I just did 15 times six. Carry. Huh? No, in my head I carried it, you know, brought it down. So.
I push my students like that.
Yeah.
They think like 25, 12, it's like, you do that? Oh, my God.
I couldn't do double digits. No. No.
I did the first two students threw their hands and I called on, I am not kidding, when I say my jaw dropped to the floor and I like raised the roof, literally. I think Mel and I looked at each other like, what did we just miss? That was incredible. So would you go to the next slide, please? This was the problem of the next one. I think we can all agree the problem that we're trying to solve is 15 times six. Like one more time. This is student A said, I would double in half this problem to make a more friendly problem. 30 times three, four, five. Which, yeah, right?
A fifth grade, fifth grade student.
Incredible. So in fourth grade, we worked a lot on our multiplication strategy. And this is one that we did highlight, double in half. Know that you can manipulate numbers. And use them to make more friendly problems for yourself. So I was, let's just say I was very impressed and excited. This is brought up. Student B, the next kid, she raised her hand, said, one of her, I see 15, I think what's clock? And I know that there are four fifteens in one hour of 60 minutes. So 60, about 15 times four is 60, and then two more fifteens is 30 more minutes. So that's them. I know. So um, I have a little bit of a unique perspective because I taught fourth and now fifth. And seeing this transfer of students has a problem, obviously like knowing what they learned last year and seeing how they apply it this year already in the first few weeks is pretty incredible. So just sharing that, the work we're doing is really powerful in that it's being retained even in the first few weeks when we don't always need the best work because they're just getting back into the group of things. But this was really amazing. Even it stuck and they all knew those strategies. It was just absolutely mind blowing. Yeah, it was amazing. And it just so happened the other two returning fourth grade teachers from last year happened to be looking for me in the building because they realized I was in my classroom right after. We were like literally raising the roof of the kids. And they came in and we were like, we have to tell them you guys did. So I would definitely celebrate that too. So.
So how many, like within math, like how many, it's probably different for each one, right? So you present a bunch of different ones like this as far as how they take it up? Yeah.
So there's a couple of different things that kind of happen, but a lot of times we try to let it come out again, totally like that. So we new perspective, we have math congresses every couple of times a week. So a math congress is when we might take a piece of student work and highlight it for the group to see. Talk about the strategies they use, chart them, try to do some of that in our everyday work. But we also do just kind of some more practices with different numbers, kind of like this, you might see a problem like 15 times six. And we just talk about it. What did you do? What did you do? How can we learn from each other? And it's not always necessarily like giving us a strategy to share. Have a share of variety of strategies. So it's when we learn from each other and grow in that way. And I think a lot of us too, in the work we've done, have learned how to use some of the vocabulary of the strategy and the things. So that like double in half, whenever we notice somebody doing something like that, we highlight it and say, oh, I noticed you just did the double in half strategy. Or the clock strategy that my student needed, like I might, the next, actually it actually came up a couple of days ago. We're doing a number strength or some problem. Another 15 problem. And I said, oh, I remember a few days ago when this student said that they used a clock to make about fifteens and he raises his hand and says, that's exactly what I was going to do. So bring it up. And that's really the heart of all the math work that we've been working on is how many different strategies we have. Kids might be able to enter that problem at a different level. Because we have what we call landscapes that we're working through in math. And so one of them might enter at a lower spot on the landscape. And so as teachers, we've been working to figure out, okay, how do I take this kid from this strategy that's not as efficient to the next most efficient strategy and kind of set them up to and I think too, just like by the work we're doing, we're honoring all strategies and saying that, you know what, wherever you aim it at is perfectly fine. But I think we could probably, you know, through watching each other, learn how to improve our work. Because last year, I will say, I probably have several students that will look at that problem and say, 15 plus 15 plus 15 plus 15, six times. And then throughout our time together, they will just have their last minutes of thought. Oh, like I think I could probably try something that Bobby's trying or whatever. So.
Well, I'm pretty into listening to lectures while I'm at home from Pam Harris. Who is actually coming here. So is there, this is exciting stuff to actually hear what I hear from them to actually give the classroom. She's also a workshop.
I was gonna say, she references Cockins' work a lot. And so they really, yeah, they really mesh. It really mesh.
I had to tweak this out the day this happened and Pam Harris. It was pretty awesome. So again, like when your principal walks in at the exact right moment, it's pretty exciting. But this, this does happen more than just that one time. This is not one time. We feel our students are doing this thing in a day out and learning from each other and continuing to just build their skills.
So we wanted to celebrate it. Yeah. Thanks, Megan.
Anything else on? Anything else for celebrations?
No. Yep. I asked Mel to talk a little bit about the work with literacy.
Yeah. I don't have a fancy presentation. I just wanted to stick notes.
Yep.
Um, we have really focused a lot this year on bringing back to confering, helping our teachers take it to the next level. We've done a lot of work with Lucy Cockens materials and the writing units. And we spent some time last winter really thinking about what's happening in the classroom, teachers and coaches and Jodi, I don't know if you may, came and helped us just do some writing suites through the classrooms just for us to gather data to say, what do our teachers need next? And so through that data collection and analysis, the admin team came around the table the Friday. And we really started thinking about what does PD this year look like for literacy, particularly in the area of writing? And out of that came, we really want to make sure confering is better understood and able to be a truly support teacher clip because the confer again is really how we get kids to the next level of writing, in the same way Megan was sharing about math. So through talking with Fran and looking at that data as an admin coach team, we really identified wanting to compliment kids on their writing. So we look at the writing progressions that we have from Lucy and we're figuring out where are kids on this progression? What things are they doing well? Maybe it's transitions, maybe it's, you know, just the organization of their paper, maybe it's the word choice that they're using, something on there that we can compliment kids on and tell them why that's important that you're doing that. And then think about that as a perspective of where's the next place I can work as a teaching point with those students. So really working with that with Fran so that we can do what we call bin slicing with our students' writing. We take that writing and we look at it on our rubric and as a team, think about, okay, if this is what a kid wrote, is this what, you know, we're seeing on the, on the rubric? So that we can really think about how am I going to be able to support them academically in instruction? And that's the work that we're really focusing on right now is getting the bin slicing solid K5 because that's something we want to make sure that we're calibrating across the K5 world. And even up to eighth grade, I would agree with this. We're also Lucy Cockens up that way. And then also thinking about, are we complimenting every kid? Right now, teachers are, have a goal that at the end of September to compliment every student on at least one time between now and the end of September. So we've been working to keep that in forefront for them. And then also providing the PD for them to know like, what are the three parts of what good compliment for a student? Maybe the student, we use a strategy and telling why it's important. So that's where our focus has been right now. We have Fran coming on this Monday night to take that a little bit further. And right now it's been coaching and administrative from the building, focusing on the bin slicing and keeping the confering in for our, for our classes. So that was what our CLT was about today with teachers. So it was really kind of long and it's really been a data driven decision.
Fran's going to be working with us throughout the whole year. We've kind of mapped out the work with our teachers. One of the reasons why conferring was picked was it really does take, it's the next step in that, but conferring can stretch across the whole day. It's, conferring is like coaching. And so it's feedback and it's, it's those one-to-one conversations or small group conversations with, with students. And we're focused on writing, but then they can take what they learn and use that, those, that conferring in math, in reading, in, and, and throughout the day. And that's another reason why we picked that specific instructional practice focus this year. So.
Well, it's important to coach that one. It is get it, right? Have to hold accountable. So I like things like this where teaching a lot of speech and people do those things. You know, put that in. Over there longest thing that I can do, it's also something that can help with mental health and maybe some of those, you know, good jobs and those sort of things. As they continue to improve, whatever. And so
And then I you're gonna do our board, our admin report. Yep, I asked Josh to do our admin report.
So I gave you a hand out there to sit. But first, I really want to talk about, just give a little bit about the really kind of highlight some of the a couple of things that we're doing. Last year we spent time, it seems like a slow process, but really being intentional and trying to be authentic about this portion of our graduate work. It really comes down to what do we truly believe about students and as educators? And about learning as well as the skills that we want our students to come away with by the time they graduate. Zach and I have been working in tandem on this and pulling in feedback from PLC facilitators and secondary staff and I believe he's going to pull his parent group back together to gather some more feedback around this as we're wrestling with, with these ideas. They were pretty set for the most part on the beliefs. And again, this was information that was gathered from staff. And that is learning is a process. Social emotional learning is foundational. All students learn, learn differently and collaborations. Right now, we're really wrestling with how we operationalize that? And what does that really truly mean from, mean from the district perspective? And then from a building perspective, how do they operationalize that and make that happen? The same is with the skills, perseverance, goal setting, critical thinking, collaboration, effective communication, self-awareness, balance, empathy, positive relationships, inclusive and respectful. And these came out of working with our staff, it's staff input. High school students were involved and providing input around these in terms of thinking about interpersonal skills, interpersonal skills. But to really dig down and say, okay, we really believe that these are the skills our students need to be even more successful beyond high school, whether that's in a college setting or a work setting. But again, how do we make these authentic? How do we operationalize these? And we're really trying to spend some time to really digging into these. We're gonna probably bring these back also on October 17th during our professional development day. Just to kind of resurface, resurface these and have a conversation around some of these ideas. Want to be authentic, want usable. We don't want to have just a pretty poster that we see around sometimes at the office. That's what we're all about. But if our actions don't align to our beliefs and what we want to see, then what's the point of that? So this honestly relates really well to the next conversation around student centered learning this, this week during our administrative meeting, we spent about nine minutes with Dr. Stillwell again. He came and facilitated over a work around student centered learning. And again, really digging into that definition as we try to come up with some recommendations that we want to bring to the board at some point to wrestle with as well around our mission and vision statements. And really try to force, not force, but really try to place an emphasis on that mission and vision statement of being really student centered in focus. During the presentation that Megan presented the beginning here, that is an example of student centered right there. It's not a worksheet. It's not a workbook. It's not, hey, you do problems one, two, three, four, five. It really is students being involved in problem solving collaboratively. They're generating some of the ideas like the word problem. They're solving the problem. They're bringing in their interests and their understanding and they're all at different levels. And we scaffold, we support every student where they are. It really truly is that developmental approach to learning that we want to get out of students. So during that, that time, we spent some time defining and trying to redefine student centered learning together to create some clarity for ourselves. And really think about centered learning as redefining the relationship between the teacher and the student, emphasizing student reflection and feedback. Goal and it really is a reciprocal process between the teacher and the student where both are giving each other feedback and setting goals, providing voice and choice, that student agency and ownership and et cetera. And there's a lot of other things that comes to that. And then another piece of this, kind of a product that's going to come out of this work would be this backwards design protocol. Where first, what we look at or is really defining, clarifying what does it look like for students and what do they require in order to make student centered learning become a reality? So we're really trying to stick to who are we, who are we trying to impact the most? What's the outcome that we want? We want students that we want to be student centered. So what do they need in order for it to be student centered? And that really comes down to voice, choice, that feedback reflection, goal setting, asynchronous learning opportunities where they can sometimes define the place and the pace of which they want to learn or able to learn, available to them. Then on down the line, then what does it look like for teachers and what do they need to make this happen? What do principals, administrators need to make this happen? What is required? What is central office? What do we need to provide? And then all the way up to the board and coming to you and saying, this is what we need to make this happen but first and foremost, it really is just that clarity around what students need. So we're going to continue to work with Dr. Stillwell. We're going to utilize this support. It's just, it's great to have an outside perspective and facilitation. Because sometimes it's just hard for an internal team to see about the weeds and outside the weeds of who we are. He's pointed out some things to us that maybe we need to be thinking about differently or providing just, hey, have you thought about this? There are times where we have to think about that. So just really trying to help support us, keep moving along this path. It's some of my comments and my reflections, this is really messy work. There's not a beautifully written formula or algorithm that at the end that kicks out this outcome that's not your student centered. That's how it works. It's going to take time, look at research or in that research and identify some metrics that we want to measure to determine our success.
We believe this work, you know, it may impact our strategic plan. And so as we're working with Dr. Stillwell too, we're also kind of planted the seed that there, there may be to a point where he facilitates admin board together. We may have a work session with him, maybe, you know, after Christmas. I know we, we've had that with ISB. Might be a good time to, to bring Dr. Stillwell in and just continue this conversation with the board involved since it, it will have impact on the strategic plan.
Hey, Josh.
This would be the third time that Dave's been, but second time.
For the whole activity.
So yeah. We've met with Dave's time, met with and prior to this and really have, I think, spent about an hour with him, really wrestling with some of them. Not just, you know, not just the facilitation, but just the vision. So.
Yeah, and that, that'll be good. I think that is where it will be good to have the whole board involved in that, you know. The, the mission is the how, the vision is the why. Well, the why is we, I mean, the why, we want every student to graduate prepared for post-secondary success. How do we get there? How, how do we make that happen? And that's, that's the mission statement we've got to create. And, and I know we've got a, a pretty good, I mean, that's, that's a portion of our mission statement there, but how do we make sure our mission is student centered, student focused? To get us to the why, which is we want all of our students, regardless of their path, we've talked about this, whether they go to a four-year school, whether they hook up with a journeyman, apprenticeship, trade school, right into the workforce, how do we best prepare them?
So I guess the question I got as we dig through this is, as we look to our students who graduated in those, the past couple of years. We've got this, some, this key answer to questions that we get answers to. Kept it the same, it allows us to look back. How useful is it of actually telling us how successful we are? That's a question the board has asked. So we get these answers, but what does it actually tell us other than we can look at what's changed, but doesn't relate to our, what we're trying to accomplish? Does it tell us how well we're doing preparing students who are going into the trades? Because it tells how well we're looking at things other than, you know, the four, four-year college career path that was, what was, what everyone was supposed to do when the survey was set up, you know, that was the, that was society's belief at that time is that everyone should use a four-year degree to be successful. And so we've had questions of trying to get at that, but how are we going to measure our success and what metrics do we have both immediately when the kids are graduating? Always going to graduate this year.
Not going to red shooter?
No, we're not.
Oh.
I think there are rules against that. We can check with Casey. I think there are rules against that. I don't think you get the COVID year to come back for another year of high school softball. But the question is, when we get to the end of the year, how do we know, you know, immediately how our students are doing in terms of their preparation for what they're going to do? Sometimes you don't know. Students think they're ready and then you know, you start asking students, students are aware that they thought that they're not as ready in certain areas as they thought they were. Number of years ago, we had questions about math and there were some changes there. Our students thought they were ready, but then we had someone who was struggling when we got off to college in math. And so
I think it's been interesting to hear those panelists. You attended those panelists conversations with the senior, the graduates who come back. It's interesting to hear their stories and some of how they felt they were prepared or not prepared. Or I think the question was always SBG, how did SBG prepare you or Stanford's grade prepare you for, you know, college? But a lot of those were kids who went to college and we haven't, I don't know that we brought a lot of kids back who just went straight to the workforce, straight to the military or, hey, how did, how did your experience here at SOE prepare you for those experiences?
And I just think as we talk about, you know, student agency and providing voice and choice, you know, how are we preparing students to make those choices? I was in Europe and it and it wasn't, testing to, there's education, there are, there are these divergent paths. Education system, there are, there are these divergent paths. Where they, where students get to make a choice, are they, are they headed to the. Votec direction or are they heading to college? There's obviously risks associated with that, you know, if a student makes a choice too early, they could you hold into that direction, I think. It's hard to, it's hard to pivot, but the flip side is, you know, um. They've got this whole process. Starting at sixteen, you know, the thing about this Votec route is this transition where they are working, going to school and. This gradual transition increases over time, they're moving in that Votec and schools integrally, integrally involved. Parents and educators, the educators are giving feedback from the, from the Votec side of things in terms of what they're doing, the way. Their stuff is being done, culinary route, so it was like, you know, it started out this way, you know, it started off as. Busboy and, you know, working and then was moving into the kitchen. And you know, he was getting feedback and it went for a couple hours a week to now, you know, seventeen years, thirty two hours a week. And so it's, and I just, you know, I just wonder, it raises those questions, but you know, how we, how is our system set up?
And I think that's what our hope is with the apprenticeship. Intended a meeting in case he's kind of having some of this up to you, you can be attending the same meeting and get some information that's around the healthcare. But the hope that maybe we're we're looking at how do we recruit some of these students at eleventh and twelfth grade, but initially, but honestly, it shouldn't start in ninth to tenth grade. Um and as we look at apprenticeship and the healthcare sector. The hope and goal is to get this, and there's some great structures already in place that we will will go beyond that. What does it look like in a, you know, the Votec field or, you know, what are some other opportunities we have for kids to get those apprenticeship hours? Get paid apprenticeship hours and then get a mentor with that and keep pushing and ultimately get a certificate that. That's transferable across the country and then get a job in. So I think that's one of the, that's one of the big things that we're doing right now is to get involved with that apprenticeship program. To help sort of prepare us or get, you know, get us launched into the next. Next level of work.
I think that's, and that's good. When you start parents from being able to make these choices, you know. When we can set the opportunities and what directions they can go to.
I've had some initial conversations, it really should have happened in seventh grade, should have happened in sixth grade. I mean, there are things that happen, but it's just like informal or, you know, career day, this is my, but truly exploring. What am I really truly interested in that I, you know, I may want to explore when I get to high school and have those opportunities?
Oh, good question. You know, when you know, work with a bunch of graduate student centered learning.
Uh yeah, very much so.
I mean, it's easy to say we want students that are learning with a bunch of adults who say what students that are learning looks like. I laugh because. My whole, we do this because the teacher says, right, you know, I mean, and and so I I will be interested to see how this all goes.
Right.
For our students.
Maybe one of the pieces, we watched a video of the classroom in Australia, but ultimately it came down to. The teacher in the classroom. Was being vulnerable enough and transparent enough with the students to gather feedback from the students ongoing. Not just about the assignments and how they're doing on their assignments, but how is class going? How do you feel instruction is happening? Is there things that that are frustrating you that maybe I could change in my classroom? That's a huge shift, but that, that ultimately, and that's where I say that as a reciprocal relationship, feedback. Teachers providing students feedback, or the students are providing ongoing feedback to the teacher and not just about my achievement.
So I'll I'll be the person who's going to raise the. The big administrative challenge that we have different students and. Hillary may have one preference in, in how things go and you get that feedback. And you're constantly just, you're going, just constantly bouncing around trying. Hillary liked it the way it was, now we got feedback, I'd like it this way, now it's this way, now Hillary's providing feedback. How much of the, how do you keep it from being a constantly changing approach? That winds up meeting no one's needs because you're trying to meet everyone's needs.
So that is the big question. Really truly is. Structuring your classroom where students have the opportunity to have a choice in how they learn at that moment in time. That's what that synchronous kind of. There may be, and there's opportunities where students may be engaged in a task with a small group of students. They may be in a task that's by themselves and maybe in a task with uh the teacher in a small group providing either. Um feedback, conferring, uh direct instruction, or even some um remediation or intervention that that needs to happen. Those are some of the things we're working on at the elementary level in terms of math workshop. Um that's essentially what that, that's we have reading workshop, which. Essentially is those opportunities for kids to be in centers or stations where they're practicing or learning. Either together or individually. And that's essentially the goal of also.
I guess I'll intercept the question Dan's asking. Does this lead to, how does this factor into issues where our students are trying to advance school? You've got a student who knows the material, they're going to have this competition, they're going to spend, they're going to spend a semester in a course where they know ninety-five percent of the material. But they are required to take the class to graduate and they already, they already know it. And so where does this lead? How does this, does this express that?
Oh, yeah, hundred percent. We just have to put the structure in place. It's that, we've said this before, low ceiling, low floor heights. We want to make that ceiling as high as we can. We also have to be able to take the handcuffs off, off of, off of us to be able to make that happen. But there's got to be, but we both, there has also has to be some learning and there has to be some structure in place. It's not as simple as personalized learning, everybody gets to do what they want. We don't want that. We want to make it, we we want high expectations for our students, but we also want to give them the opportunities to. If they want to push higher and farther, we want to push that envelope as much as we can. So.
So Red. Do two quick things in the chat with Cassie and see if she's got any questions online and we'll check. You did or?
Put in a couple of chat things.
That's what I was supposed to say, something chat number changed, that's what I was.
Can you guys hear me if I talk?
From Cassie, do we have an opportunity to bring some students back? Graduating, yes. So we can, we can do the same process, I think that's with SCI generally. So I think we definitely do that and. I I think that's, that is useful, so I think something we could look at to be able to be useful there. To gain some of that perspective as we go down this path. Now I'm going to open it to Hillary because we've all been talking and it's actually, we don't take a breath to like. So any thoughts on the support to be graduated? Do you want to pay at uh? At Josh, how realistic does this seem to you as a, as someone who's been a student and graduate?
I have two things. So I know I guess that S C S class, that's like a, like the job kind of in the hiding area now. But I know that's one thing that like some people struggle with because going into college, you need to learn these simple things, you know, like. How to compute the others. I know a lot of people, I suppose, don't know how to do all that stuff. And then uh I didn't know if that was like.
Uh no, not, not specifically.
Okay, and then the other thing is. With math, like the high school math, since like COVID, we've gone with all of them. And it's like most of the teachers don't really teach it to you. So I know last year, a lot of people struggled with that because we were like, same, we're trying to teach ourselves. And it's like, it's really hard, but a lot of people have seen that.
Well, you know, I think. I think that based on my conversation, right? I think there was an assumption that it has to be all online. Blended learning environment should be all technology, which is not true. It's a blended environment where there's instruction happening. Blending with technology. I know that my conversations with with that team, they're looking at some different research this year of what that. What that classroom culture, climate and organization looks like available for support. Support students other than being online, trying to watch a video all the time, because that's, that's not. Not as, that, I would classify that as not necessarily highly effective instruction, but um.
That's been. In the street, so there's a lecture that she watches on the forum and then they do all the homework while they're in the classroom. And so, I mean, it's different, college has more.
Sure.
But you know, just what, what is really that?
Research wouldn't support just playing off, so that would be interesting to know what happens with that.
Thank you, Josh. I think note for Davis and Chris is that we will want a work session. And I think just before we move on. It's the same thing we want with the feedback reflection. We're going to ask for our teachers, they're going to be able to ask for it for ourselves, right? And where we're, where we're doing well, what we're. Okay, uh for freedom. We had the work session earlier where we talked about where I was building to the process.
No, yeah, what I, what I put on here was just um.
And as you guys all know, we don't have negotiations this year. I think we're hoping to get back into some of our discussions and negotiations. Go ahead into that. Almost, I guess, uh we'll talk about.
Tim, can I say quickly, you said, so you want us to set up a work session for student?
So when they do this, and they bring this to the graduates back.
They do it in January, I think that's, yeah.
Just want to try to coordinate that.
It says, just wanting to reiterate that in order to ensure we're effectively preparing students for post-secondary success. It's wise to take a look at the success of our students in post-secondary world. Math, preparing for homework, autonomy, goal setting, many postal and graduates struggle post-secondary. I think Tim mentioned this. So.
Yeah, you want to understand that I think important is awesome to, we have to move beyond just. College, it's got to be trade schools, it's got to be all different avenues.
Well, and you remember when the uh was, did Emily come, Corth, and presented uh some of her early work with the uh math classroom in eighth grade? And really the the, a big, to me, a a big takeaway was just teaching kids how to be. More resilient, self-reliant, um to seek and find the resources that they needed, you know. So advocate for themselves. These are the lessons that come out of that, not just math. And so, you know, lessons that will help them in the work in post-secondary regardless of track, so.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Any of these get pulled out? Hearing now, I'll entertain a motion to the consent agenda. Motion by Coons. Second by Luster. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Give an aye online. Action items, uh SCI committee membership.
Yeah, we we try to, we try to rotate uh new members in, where do I have that at? When I had it up, oh, there it is. We we try to rotate new members in, um uh we've pared it down just a little bit. But uh still with hitting all the the necessary categories, uh doing our best to keep it equal male, female. Um but again, this is a group that uh we kind of use as a critical friend. Uh we present things uh to them, they give us feedback. Um data, strategic plan. In winter, we bring in students, current middle school, high school students get their feedback on how we're doing, basically. And so um this is just a group that um. I I recommend to the board for uh representing our school community.
Only I will note, as I just did my quick math on there, is that it does not comply with the state requirement that each of the bounds.
Are we off?
It's seven and ten.
Okay.
As you recall, the state changes, changes. Encouraging you to do it, requiring you to balance them plus or minus one, so.
Nope.
So if you want to add the.
Okay.
So you can bring that, you can bring that back next month.
Okay.
I I should have caught that, I just. Just uh. Into my intention as always.
So. So we'll table this?
I think, well, I think.
The SCI membership as presented with the uh.
Motion by Luster, second by Wolf. Discussion.
Counselor, someone on mental health.
Yeah, you can add that as part of the additions, so that that makes it, that makes it easy.
Yeah.
Easy way to do that, so. And that's, that's, that was, that's also a bit of our struggle, we tend to make more volunteers for people that sort of like SCI. And so it's always been a struggle to get that, so it's, it is that, it is that challenge and so on. Like one of the, one of the things that we have to have is that data suspension, because you're, sometimes when you get a larger committee, you get names on there. But if they don't show up, right, then you don't have, it's hard to, or it's hard to, for this one, we have to have to present the members show up. In order for them to do business, so. Okay, um with motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion for unanimous. Next up.
Fundraiser.
There's a lot of red on here, I noted. They're not being done this year. So they can, so they can, they can add any fundraising, they can process this.
Yeah.
So the challenge here, this whole document was set up to deal with things that are done every year. And so this is always my struggles, we get, when we get this sentence, it's not being done this year, is it really an annual fundraiser if you're not doing it? And that's, that's always my, that's always my struggle, is this is really meant to be a list of things that this is something we do every year no matter what. Uh and I think uh. You know, we just have to also look at some, I glanced at a couple of justifications that, you know, a lot of people. We just, you know, some of them may be a little more detailed because they have to have some purpose behind it. Like it can't be, it can't be too general and so um. Saying raise money to support the club is kind of. You know, something the auditor or the family that would be, because it's hard to, you know, what does that mean when you're doing fundraisers? So, so the question we've got is, do we strike the ones that are red? If they want to, in the future, they just have to apply it as they, as they would for the other fundraiser. So I think that's my, that's my question is.
And the goal is, I mean, I think the red is. They're eliminating.
No, the red is not doing this year, so that's, that was the question I had.
Okay.
Is the intent eliminate or is it to?
You think we're doing a better job with the board? You think we're doing a better job with the board's goal as far as. Yeah, cards and cookie dough and candles and baskets and and doing it more for. Youth camps and and things that kids are getting something out of.
So I think the only other thing. This Jim was. Asked about a calendar, they kind of had that pointed out. I think that was the script that asked about that part. As a request, I'd have it, have it as the calendar forms, you knew which, which fundraisers were going on then.
He's, they've got him, they've got him.
You can't visualize, there's no way to visualize that. So in the future, it's going to be useful up for these annual ones, to have a learning calendar that just shows what's going on, so they know.
Especially, I mean, there's a lot of people that we can drive, just to make sure that those are not like one one week and not one next week.
I should make a motion to approve. The twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three fundraising request as listed.
Motion by Luster, second by Coons. I need a special. I'd like some clarity about in the future. Colorful, it's nice, but it'd be nice to know for sure. I still want to understand, is red being stricken, that there no longer any fundraisers or? Or one of them was, I was just looking at FBLA.
And FBLAs take, they took over concessions.
Right.
So.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, and so that's. Yeah, I just think from a clarity standpoint. I know, I just don't know what the status, I don't know, I don't know what's red. We just know they're not doing it this year, but I don't know. It's stricken off of the annual request because of it.
What would you want if they're not going to do it for the year, what would you?
If it's, if it's not annual fundraiser, it shouldn't be on annual fundraiser, it should be, they should just submit, you know, figure that every other year or every third year, they should just submit a request the year they want to do it, is what they should do. Because this is really meant to streamline the process, the answer that we do every year, we just plan around itself. So I just like some follow-up clarification afterwards on the comment, so. Motion a second, any other questions or discussion? Hearing not all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously, I think. Yes. Okay. Next up is the November board meeting. Thursday, November. Falls very nicely on the day of the Iowa Association School One annual meeting. Last year, we postponed it and later in the evening, there was a rush back, I think is what we did. Other years, we moved it, we will have to think more clearly about this when we do next year. And we need this session to plan this out in advance. So I think the question here is from Chris, since it's a regularly scheduled meeting. We have to change it at a board meeting, so. Change the time, change the date.
It's good. Coming back, it's for a long day.
The calendar, calendar okay for Tuesday, athletic events, sporting events, band events, anything like that, we could be okay.
Is it one of those we could go earlier to if there is stuff?
Oh, we're, we're going to have some waiting time right now, so we can make the decision in October, we don't have to make it tonight, we could table it. But we're planning stipulations, it's, it's nice, so.
At four fifteen, Adam will be in Burnin'. There's a wrestling. And there's a Walnut Honor Band concert at seven. And Walnut Band Festival in Marion.
The festival and concerts in Marion.
Marion.
At seven.
Yes. Five thirty, so normal time. Motion. Is that a motion now?
I made a motion to change the November board meeting to Tuesday, November fifteenth at five thirty P M.
Motion by Luster, second by Coons.
I do have you registered for ISP and I have rooms for all of you already, and then I'll bring Hillary on Thursday, that Thursday, and then we're hoping there'll be a second person coming this way.
Discussion on that. Three, none. Motion a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. There's another aye up there, so I'll oppose. Motion carries unanimously.
Could be the.
Elliot, yeah.
Delegate for Cassie, Cassie, maybe first the I, Cassie?
So I think we can talk, we can, we can take a volunteer, so we'll talk to the offline.
Okay. Okay.
Information, board policy five point seven point nine, wellness.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly. Casey started his. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Josh. No, go ahead. Engineer sitting to my right, it's got to be. Get a move on.
So we brought this up a few times, we, again, just to quick review previously, last spring, we met as a wellness committee. Went through the couple of meetings of process, just kind of little down what was truly important. As you're looking at the board policy itself, the board policy itself doesn't necessarily change significantly at all, because the goal areas are the same, it's nutrition, education and promotion, it's physical activity. And then we still maintain mental health and wellness as a, as a critical component or goal area, and then personal safety as a goal area, which is still listed in our board house. What we're trying to do is better articulate the activities. Beyond just the board policy, because the board policy is supposed to be broad, but to articulate the activities or areas that we're going to focus on over the course of this year, potentially next year. To keep our work moving forward. Obviously, our nutrition education program. Still, still maintains, but a couple of things that we're, we're doing this year. Or need to complete over the course of the next couple of years is really take a look at our health standards guaranteed by our whole curriculum process for A five. That's an area that's been kind of missed over the last several years. We're going to utilize nutrition specialists, so Becky, nutrition program, brought on nutrition specialist. For the program, and essentially we'll be providing additional lessons. To classrooms, specifically at the elementary level about demonstrating, promoting healthy eating habits. Physical activity, continue to increase percentage of students participating in varied activities that promote an active lifestyle. Annually, I always bring that list and have a conversation around the E waiver. So that kind of aligns with that, so seems to align with that. When it came, mean, about an active lifestyle and student wellness. We haven't done anything with that yet, about the horizon, provide P courses offered throughout the year that accommodate students' academic schedules, so really, for the options. And there's some opportunities during zero block for kids to participate in some of those things. Exemptions for students who are, are active all year round, which is a question mark, something we want to explore. What is the possibility of those kids who are active all year round and are. Is there, is there options? The big one, obviously, is the mental health and wellness case. I met with Jamie and Dan in the spring, just to kind of summarize the information of, from, from the committee. Number one was, we really want to strengthen and improve our tier one implementation. And really look at fully implementing the DESA, we adopted the DESA during the year of the pandemic and just been kind of touch and go the last couple of years, tried, done some work with it, but not consistently across the district. I think we have a good plan this year of what the stat implementation. There's some new components we're adding to it for high school students, there's some lessons, tier one lessons to support. Instruction at the high school level. Use all those components of the DESA, differentiate between tier one, two, and three plans, and those systems based on DESA results. I want to train, retrain all of our staff using the DESA, we have a really good opportunity this year, because this has changed a little bit. And so we'll look at training and retraining all staff on the use of that information and how to screen students. Create a leadership team, or create leadership team structures to address social emotional behavior at all across the district. The admin team and counseling team met jointly. Beginning August, to start the conversation around. The goals and priorities we want to establish for the district regarding SEBH, or that's meeting coming up this September twenty third. We have some. Conversations we need to have around tier one, how we're going to build the capacity of all our staff across the district. Again, we have, we're awarded that fifty two thousand dollar grant, and we'll be attending. We have teams from JBLD attending the Iowa Best Conference Convention in Des Moines in October. Then creating, building level SEBH leadership teams, which is how, has started to happen, and teams are starting to form that specifically focus on SEBH. And then another part of the district team is really to take a look at the district and community mental wellness committee. And reestablishing that, but really trying to identify what is the purpose of that committee, and it's not just to share information, but to really help engage with them. In regards to what are the community resources available to us, partnerships that we can create. As well as looking at those partnerships with outside agencies who could potentially provide school-based therapy for our students. Started those conversations. I think another thing to point out within that, that piece is our partnership now with. Community Mobile Crisis, which is. Incorporated in Johnson County, used to be, but still through foundations too, but a lot of the, the support that it got was from Linky County. Through foundation to Johnson County, this community mobile crisis. Is kind of taking that role, kind of that JFAST role for, for our district, and with them already, and started some conversations with them. And building those, strengthening that partnership with them. And then finally, the, the second goal in their personal safety, which continues to be on that, that board policy. Looking at implementing suicide awareness group number six twelve. As well as adopt a safe touch curriculum to foster learning, for student personal safety in positive relationships. Especially at the elementary level, it's kind of that. So any questions?
Really, while we were there, the counselors can't be tier one mental health. Because while they're trying to teach, they may have a crisis, so the tier one really does a district job, right? So we're through the desk and all the, this stuff, we're pushing out this stuff, so the counselors can come in tier two, tier three. You know, and really, that's what we need in most, they were struggling trying to do all of it, and so I think. I think this is important, and I think we'll actually free them up to be. Available in certain situations, which I think will be good, and I thought it was, we got the community this last year. So which is the DESA, we're going to schedule for.
It'll be. October, I think, beginning, middle of October. There, there's some training we need to do with our staff, because the system is new, and it's, there's just different. Different ways to access it, but the system is much better than it was, way easier to use, way easier to set up. To, for that screen purposes, and there is a high school where students can actually break themselves.
Any other questions? What story? What is it?
Can I say one thing about this project?
Yeah.
So the, like, the people who are active. I get that, but like, our people are really good about like making sure you're healthy, and like, we do a lot of yoga, and so I make sure we're, if you're like. You're not pushing yourself, so I think it'd be good, like, still have that, and not, like, want to be okay with it, because there's a lot of time to go, so.
For sure. You know what I mean? And that, I think that's what that comes.
Yeah.
I think that's part of that, that's why you don't want, you don't want to get rid of that, right, you, but keep kids out of option, since they met that.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, this is just back to like. Period time, what happens when you do not take good even their own experience, this is important, you do not. So you pop in and out. As your Susan. Could be really quirky when you were in the middle of quarters.
We, those constitute as class, right, and the day that, that's the credit for some of those. I wonder if you even know. Kind of run up nutrition stuff, like that was different on the XCS though, but still like a component of. Nutrition stuff.
Tim. Cassie.
Yeah. Cassie's that question?
Yeah. It, Cassie's question is, will the leadership team slash structure that is being formed recommend an update to the policy and float that by Adam and I? I don't.
If, if there's an update, if there's, if, if there's an update to the policy, we go from the policy committee to the, or we go from the wellness committee to the policy committee.
Correct, but I think, and correct me, Josh, there are no recommendations to change the current policy. What Josh is presenting is what the wellness committee came up with as far as goals to address the policy.
I guess what I heard is, maybe what I, I heard, I heard that there was some idea of changing the structure of the committee, which I think would affect the policy. Uh. Membership and structure, I thought, I thought you mentioned some of those you're going through there. But I think that's.
They under, it's just under the leader. Leadership team, not the wellness committee. The wellness committee will still be in the wellness committee, it's the, it's the district level SEBH district-wide leadership.
Okay.
Which is principals and counselors currently. That structure may change as we get our feet grounded, and we may want to incorporate teachers in the district as well. But currently, the structure will look like district-level leadership around social emotional behavior. Buildings will have their teams, and then those teams will feed up and to provide information back to the district level. And look at the district level team as kind of oversight to, to help guide and direct resources, think about other goals. How we might incorporate our community. Um, how we might incorporate our, you know, community resources and supporting what's happening for, for buildings.
Thank you. Yep. Uh, if the implementation of policies.
Yeah, I think what came out of that policy was, uh, we're going to avoid Sundays, Wednesday evenings, if there's any break from what the policy is, which I think Sundays is two to five or two to six, any break outside that, that, uh, would have to be logged and rationale stated with it so that we could review it mid-year and at the end of the year, I believe. And so this is the, a document, an ongoing document that Casey created. So, right, it, it's the start, so, there we go. Group, date, event, reasoning.
I don't see reasoning, right, those listed.
It's not completed yet, so I caught him, caught him today, um, as he was heading out to set up for volleyball and that. But we'll get rationale, and right now we have some music stuff on there. Um, I just wanted to get that in front of you to where if it's.
And I guess the only thing I will say is, the part of the discussion we had, is the things needed to move around, which, we should not be pushing academic activities into prohibited times to accommodate other activities. I think that's fundamentally, it's wrong to take a graded, a graded academic activity and say, you need to do this during a prohibited time because we're not willing to move other things around. There's, that's my own personal feeling.
Yeah, well, that's why I want to put it out early, because it's, these are November dates, November's the early date, so we can go and tell the fine arts department, move it.
I guess we've talked about musical, that's a story, that's, that's a different thing.
Oh, this is, the first one's musical.
But vocal music is, you know, those are, those are things that.
Okay.
They are graded and.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, we had that as part of the conversation. Depends on what grade levels it is.
They're an hour. They're an hour.
Well, but the problem is you can't be graded on. So that, that is, that is the problem, right? If you move it to Sunday, but it's voluntary and you can't create a voluntary activity, but, so. I guess that's my feedback, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah. Well, I guess, the challenge, we don't have very much schedule. When we build our schedule for the year, we should not be pushing academic activities off of, off of the periods where they can be.
They should be.
Yeah. And, you know, it really comes down to scheduling, but we have to. And the only principles that are, you have to, with the schedule blocks, if these things fit, you know, it creates a ship.
Sure.
Um, talking points. Jamie, I'll go, I'll go first since you arrived.
Six minutes.
Yeah, like, two, two things, um, first, I'm pretty excited about the math, the fact that it's working, that we're teaching our students to think instead of just memorize things, which is exciting. So, and then the other thing is just to, um, highlight and validate what Hillary mentioned about S C S, if we're preparing our students for success after school, that's something that she has pointed out and mentioned that is hurting in not preparing our students for success later in life when they graduate because they're not learning basic skills from us, that would just something to, it might not fit in the discussion where, where she mentioned it, but I think that's very valid, so it's something that we, that we, that we discuss.
Corey. We're on clock wise. We're very, I'm an engineer, we go clockwise.
I liked what, like, Melissa and Mrs. Lyman, I think, said, about the, like, reassuring the students, like, what they're doing, that, I think, it's really nice to know, like, what you can move on when you teach people, it's on here, it kind of tells you, like, they care about you, like, how you're doing in class.
Dan. Well, I know my life can be very jealous that you got a lot.
I know, right?
Um, no, I think for me, uh, the importance, the most important thing to talk about today is helping students, you know, maybe, it's, uh, it is, it is weird, we didn't have to talk about it, but it's easy to get down the path where you're, you are student told this, but then all of a sudden we realize you're not. And, uh, you guys have to say, and you guys have to do that, I think, those are scary things for teachers, um, you know, or administrators that, to let, you know, uh, many students have a choice. Uh, but, uh, from, from my personal experiences, I'm, I have a worry or a deep, um, emotional, but, but they, um, they don't need to use that, um, that privilege, and I think it'll be exciting to see how that, um, morphs into our instructions.
Um, it's still mine, but I'll go back with, I can be, I'm still, well, uh, I'm just anxious to see where that goes, you know, I think, uh, it's been some good discussion there, again, mission and vision, we'll see how that kind of ends up and actually play a sort of stuff.
Cassie. I'll let you type yours if you want. Ah, there she's got it, uh, Davis is going to read it.
All right. Talking points from Cassie, like to focus on learning, getting more calibration on, uh, literacy, getting more one-to-one connections to teacher-students and getting to those, uh, cross-cutting skills like writing, crossing over to math, et cetera.
Remind me that, uh, as we wind through the year, uh, I'll just say, thanks, I always appreciate your input, it's, it's nice to get to see you on there. And I'll turn my topic onto, uh, charge to remember that you, the Elvis Repeator replacement, uh, we'll be moving next month with them coming on board to join you in, uh, in Des Moines for the Iowa, if you'd study. If you've got ideas on good people, I would encourage you to file a paper for this. Where? Before having.
She's at the board pretty high.
So, I think this year will be. So, that's where I'm at. Um, next rated board meeting is Thursday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-two at five ten P M in this room. I will introduce the motion to adjourn, so, so I push my coo, it's second by Alaska, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.